And I can still live. Okay, good to go.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start the meeting as your new Vice President of Executive Affairs. Thank you, colleagues, for voting me in for the 2023 year. And Happy New Year to all. And we have two new board members. I'm going to give the honor of the President to formally introduce them later this evening. So, as you know, 2022 was a perilous time in the city of Buffalo and in our school district. We went from tragedy over the holiday weekend where five young children lost their lives in a horrific fire. They were all Buffalo Public Schools children, weren't they, Dr. Williams?
Four.
Four.
Yes.
Okay, sad. And then recently, two people lost their lives on the 33 going down a wrong way entrance. And then lastly, Damar Hamlin, who's fighting for his life above Louisville. So with that, I'm going to introduce Tanya Williams, who will set the stage for our session today.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman Dr. Evans Brown, for kind of setting the stage for what we will be talking about within your committee report, which is safety, security, and wellness. But I would like to just ask your permission to have just a couple of minutes to talk about some of the hard work that our staff did during this historic generational blizzard that we experienced. If I could just have a couple of minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to share that under the leadership of Chief David Hills, they were working constantly during this blizzard when many of us were able to, you know, be at home at least, and some of us enjoying some of the comforts of home, but certainly within our homes. And I just want to read a statement about the work that happened behind the scenes because I think often that sometimes this is a staff that doesn't get uplifted enough and that, you know, when folks think about schools and school districts, they tend to think about, you know, the principal and teachers and teacher assistants, and they don't really see a lot of the work behind the scenes that has to happen operationally for folks to be able to come to work and to do the work that they do. So as the disaster hit Buffalo on Friday, December 30, multiple operational staff took the initiative to engage the challenges that quickly became apparent. Barry Kirker was in constant communication on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, and the days following to keep abreast of the critical issues that were arising. He lined up emergency contractors to haul snow to multiple dump sites. Anthony Zachary and his grounds crew worked tirelessly to open access to buildings and facilities so that the work could begin. Samantha Long coordinated the trades to address issues. Dan Keith made sure high-impact damage to buildings were assessed. Brad McKelvin visited multiple sites to restore power, check generators, and address panel issues. Jim Maranka drove through horrendous conditions to service electrical needs at our schools. Our trade staff also fought challenging conditions to get to and stabilize buildings. Yvette Gordon visited multiple sites to ensure that locations were safe. Jim Barnes and Jennifer Lotempio assisted in lining up emergency funding and initiating the record-keeping for emergency reimbursement. Our building engineers and their staff worked the clock to assess and communicate damage and hold back the ravages of the storm. The building maintenance staff at School 61 and School 17 took in individuals who were attempting to get warm. At 61, DeWitt Overton and a member of his staff assisted a stranded motorist and accompanied individuals for days. At School 17, Simon Dustow and two of his staff took in motorists stranded in the lot. They were freezing, and individuals from a neighboring building. Dan Ando at the waterfront drove hours to get to the building, and N.A. Squeegee prevented the water from reaching a critical height and from sitting too long. The engineer at 301 Bergard took extreme risk to get to 89 to rescue a staff member that was trapped without heat or power for days. Many of our building-based staff were at buildings for days on end, ensuring that our building stays safe. There were far more individual efforts that ensured that we were able to reopen schools. We know that the recovery from this disaster will take some time, but with this team, I think we can all feel confident that we will come back better and stronger. We wanted to make sure that many of our staff who did not have direct access would not be without money the weekend of New Year's. And so there were several that went to Bergard High School. They opened up the high school, and people were able to come in and to get money. And I just want to say that, you know, David Hills worked tirelessly. He did a magnificent job. He was texting me and, you know, calling constantly throughout the entire time that, you know, we were all experiencing this. And I just want to applaud you, David. I don't think oftentimes, we just don't have time to pause sometimes and to do it. There's so much work to do. You did a magnificent job during this time. Thank you, and thank all of your staff.
Yeah, that's pretty huge because we don't think about these things that you mentioned, Dr. Williams. You're in the behind-the-scenes activities because it could have went the other way, where losing could have went on in these school buildings, and we would have a mess on our hands.
That's right.
Yeah, with the protocols that you put in place, yeah, kudos to David Hills along with the other behind-the-scenes engineers and staff and et cetera. Absolutely. So with that, you want to introduce the overview of David Hills?
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, you know, congratulations again to you on being nominated and unanimously being voted in as the Vice President of Executive Affairs. Tonight, we're going to be talking about safety and security and wellness for all of our students. And, you know, everything that we do is aligned to the strategic plan that we have in place. And goal number three specifically outlines what we expect to achieve with respect to safety, security, and wellness, not only for our students, but for all of our staff, community partners working in our schools, and any visitors to our schools. And we have something exciting that's going to be happening in another couple of days over at International Prep. We have moved our agenda, you know, in that we've hired a new Chief of School Security, Barbara Lark. And so she and our Chief Financial Officer, our Chief Operations Officer, David Hills, will be presenting tonight, sharing an update on where we are with some of our security measures. So I will turn things over to them. Thank you.
So Chief Lark, I think I'll go first with kind of the background, and then you can roll into the protocols. The Evolve scanners were purchased through an RFP process. During last year, an RFP was written. It was modified several times. And then over the summer, it closed. And we had about eight vendors put proposals in. And the valve scanners through Ink Labs was one of the proposals selected. There were actually three of the vendors had the same technology, which are these standing valve scanners that we've seen videos of. And so we've been working with Ink Labs, who is installing the valve product. The first phase of installation and shipping has been at the high schools. The valve scanners, the Ink Labs basically does a site survey first, walks through with the principal, the building engineer. Before they actually put the order in for the scanners, determines, you have to decide whether you want a left-side scanner or a right-side scanner. So we went through that process, and as soon as the board approval came through and the contract was signed, which thanks to Jennifer Lotempio and Jim Barnes, happened very quickly once the RFP was closed. And then we have 65 of the valve systems coming. We have 59 addresses totally. So the high schools, we've been able to have, six of our high schools have double systems, which means they have one system at one door for one set of population coming in, another system at another door. None of our high schools chose to do a double-lane system, which is where you take a left- and a right-hand scanner and put them together and have both sides operating. But instead, they decided to put them at two different doors. So after the site survey, the order was put in, and the order came in, actually, the week before the storm, before break. These huge boxes came in, and the hope was we'd unpack them over break and do the actual Go Live event the day the storm hit. But the Go Live event at IPREP is going to be this Friday. And that is a situation where we want to give everyone an invitation to see how they work. And all of the high schools, after we do a dry run at IPREP for a couple of weeks to make sure we have policies in place, all the rest of the high schools will have a training schedule that Chief Lark and I are going to work out with Evolve tomorrow. And then as soon as those are concluded, we'll start the site surveys for the elementary schools. We're going to do one batch of elementary schools first, and then a second batch of elementary schools. We seem to be, we took about three weeks longer than I expected to on the first deployment, almost four weeks. So it's very possible that, once we come up with the timeline, it could be going into the summer. So that's to be expected. And then we have one system left over at this point that's not allocated to a building. We're hoping to put that at central registration, give that's a high pathway. But if we may get to a situation where we see that one of our schools that thought could get by with one needs a second one. But I'm hoping that we've done a good enough planning that we can have one extra for central registration. This is very exciting technology. It's used at Disney Springs, at Disney World. It's used at multiple NFL stadiums. The Tennessee Titans just started using it this season. It is designed, Lincoln Center uses it. Charlotte Mecklenburg is kind of the biggest school system that has adopted this technology. They started rollout last year and continue to this year. They have both their secondary schools and elementary schools. Niagara Falls has used this technology since, oh, I think November of last year, maybe even September of last year, so they've been using it for a long time. And it's a very impressive technology. It uses the scanning scanners, which are very unobtrusive, but it also has a pad that shows when students are walking in or anyone's walking in. It shows a box around whatever may be the threatening item. And then there's also a secondary pad at the clearing table. So if something's seen, a person sent over to the table, and the person at the clearing table will also see the same items, which I know there was a video shared last time I talked. Chief Lark, can you think of anything I didn't cover?
Nothing that wasn't going to be covered in my presentation. So I think you covered it all.
And I do want to thank Chief Lark while we do the handoff here. This has been an incredible amount to kind of structure policies and procedures around. She's been very, very aggressive in understanding how the technology works and going out to visit it. And I've been glad to not have to carry this alone because I only know a certain part of it. So thank you, Chief Lark. Congratulations, and you can take over.
Okay, thanks, David. And I, Happy New Year's, everyone. And I'd also like to congratulate all of the board members on being voted in to your offices. So thank you. David, Mr. Hills did cover some of the things that I was going to talk about. As he said, we are going live, and we're very excited about going live this Friday over at IPREP at 7:45. And the invitation is extended to all of you. We'd love to have you there. The scanners, Evolve scanners, will be installed in three phases, as he's also pointed out, starting with the high schools. We plan to, after the January 6 original installation date, we plan to wait about a couple of weeks so that we can do an assessment of how things are working at IPREP before we just move on and start installing in the other schools. If we have issues, we'd like to be able to work them out while we're at IPREP. So the transition can go a little smoother when we get to the rest of the schools. We are meeting with Evolve as early as tomorrow morning to work out the installation schedule for the remaining high schools. So if everything goes well and we don't have any major problems or any major delays, we'd like to try to get the scanners installed in the high schools by the end of February, March, March at the latest. And then we could move into the elementary schools in the second phase and then the central registration office as soon as that's done. As Mr. Hills stated, the RFP selection was already done prior to me joining Buffalo Public Schools, but I have been intentional with the scheduling and of the installation and the training of the administrators and the security officers. I've written the operating procedures for the security officers so that they know exactly how to operate the scanners. And we are going to be relying on the school administrators to assign whoever they designate to assist school security at the scanning stations. The reason why that's important is because school administrators know these students. They have a rapport with them. They can greet them, help them move through the line. They can, you know, call them by name, and it'll soften the transition period. Students are not used to this. It's going to be a learning curve for everyone, and it'll help to have a friendly face there greeting them in the morning. It'll help personalize the process. The training that's going to take place for principals will be conducted January 10 and 11 at the principals' meetings. It's going to be done via webinar with Evolve and Inkjet, sorry, Inkjet, Ink Labs. They're going to conduct the training, and they'll show a video and do a 15, 20-minute training session, and then open it up for questions and answers. I'm going to, Edmira, if you could, show the first picture. It'll probably help to have a visual of the actual scanning systems in place. Now, this is IPREP's, the Evolve scanner is installed and ready to go at IPREP. The security officers have had some initial training just before the storm, but we are going to do another training session there tomorrow. But this is where students will enter. This is one of their scanning sites. They do have two, but this is the one that we're, I have pictures of right now. So students will enter through the main door. They will place their backpacks at the primary scanning station, at the primary station right here. Backpacks have a tendency to set off the alerts. So there are three items that we know of right now that frequently set off the alerts. That's backpacks, umbrellas, and eyeglass cases for some reasons. So we have all of the students put their backpacks here. The security officers will search. Once the student clears the scanner, they will be handed, the backpacks will be given back to them. Now, for some reason, the alert is set off. Then the security officer, the administrator from the school will ask the student to step aside to, next picture, please, Edmira. To the, well, I don't know. I have a cursor here, but I don't know if you probably can't see mine. But to your far right, there is a table here and another tablet screen. We'll have security officers here as well. Not sure what happened to the picture. Yes, so security officers would be here as well. This is the secondary scanning area. You're going to be looking for that red box that set the alert off that will indicate the area on the body where the item is. Now, these school students and/or visitors, because our visitors will be scanned as well when they enter the school, will have their backpacks, purses, or whatever clothing items searched. If they clear everything, then they're able to go on to class. If for some reason there is an issue and we actually find a weapon, then the security officers have their operating procedures as to how to conduct and what to do in that instance. But these are the two locations that, that's the main focus, the main entrance, and then the secondary scanning area over here. Can I have the next picture, please, Edmira? Now, this is also a scanning device that's set up at IPREP. Not all the schools will have this device, I'm told, and it has to do with attendance. Some schools requested it, not all the schools requested it. And if they did, then they'll be working with school administrators on how to use that. But it has nothing necessarily to do with the weapons. The weapon detections are going to be determined by the initial scanning device as the students come into school.
Chief Lark?
Yes.
Would it be all right if I just give a little clarification?
Sure.
This picture here is of a second system. It's exactly the same as the other system, but it's at a different door. This is the door they use for breakfast.
Okay, so that, yeah, go ahead. That wasn't clear to me, but thank you.
Because we also found out when we visited IPREP, they have a barcode scanning system they use for attendance. So that was also part of what we discussed at IPREP. But this system here, when they come into breakfast, they'll go through it. If they come in the main door, they'll go through the other system. So IPREP has two different units deployed that do the same thing.
Okay, well, what we need to do tomorrow at IPREP is set up the tables so that they're set up upstairs, and I didn't see the tables. So we'll have to make sure that they have the primary and secondary tables set up there as well. We've also been working with Dr. Reynolds to set up and schedule some information sessions for the parents with Evolve and Ink Labs. We know that it's important for the parents to understand the process for the scanner and what their children are experiencing on a day-to-day basis. So after the training on the 10th and the 11th for the principals, we're going to move forward with a training for parents to inform them of exactly how the Evolve scanner works, give them a better idea of it. We did a parent information session over at East Community High School maybe a month, a couple of months ago now. It'll be something similar to that. But it may be virtual, so however it's done, it'll be definitely informational and beneficial for the parents to have that information. Are there any questions so far?
Okay, so are you done, Chief, with Chief Lark, with your overall presentation?
I am, no, I just want to talk about the settings as well, and then I guess we can open it up to questions. I'm sorry.
Yeah, complete your presentation, and then we'll open the floor up for questions.
Right, no, thank you. Inkjets, I'm sorry, Ink Labs and Evolve, they have, the system is set up with a setting from A through F. And what I've decided to do is to recommend that the scanner systems are set on F, which is a bit of a more aggressive, more sensitive setting. The reason for that is we want to ensure that we are taking every effort and every precaution to make sure that we are going to be able to detect anything that comes through the school. So we want to start off and be as cautious as possible. And we are going to be winding students in addition occasionally to the scanner. And that way, students will know upfront that we are really just not going to tolerate anything, and we just want to eliminate any possibility of threats. So the winding system will continue occasionally. It's going to have to happen at the secondary scanning sessions anyways, stations anyways, because we just have to make sure that there's no weapons there. But hopefully, as we get used to and we're comfortable with this process, it'll go a little smoother. It's definitely going to be a lot faster than what we're currently doing with the 100% winding. We got to be able to move students through there. The F setting will probably trigger some more alerts than if we had a lower setting, but we think it'll still be worthwhile. It'll still move the students through relatively quickly. Now and done, thank you very much.
Chief Lark, I know you wanted to mention the panic button.
Oh, yeah, there is a triangle, thank you. There is a triangle button that's located in the center of the tablet screen. Officers, we're going to finalize all of this tomorrow when we meet with Evolve. But once we determine what that button, how it's going to be used, and what we want to use it for, it will allow the security officers or even the school administrator, if need be, to hit that button, and it'll automatically text myself, the Executive Director of Security, the school principal, in case the principal isn't standing right there at site in 911. And it's only to be used in emergency situations. So, but that panic button is very helpful. It will eliminate the need for a security officer to call 911 or for the office staff to call 911.
Sounds good. And it certainly sounds like that panic button, when you do the training, that all schools will be on the same page, right? With the instructions of how to use that panic button.
Absolutely, Dr. Brown, that panic button and the protocol. All schools are configured differently. They all look different when you walk in the door. However, the procedures and the policies are going to be the same and consistent throughout all of the Buffalo Public Schools. So everyone's on the same page. If a guard needed to go from one school to the other, that guard is going to know exactly how to operate that scanning system because the process and the policies are the same throughout.
Sounds good. Thank you. So I'm going to open the floor up for questions. I saw President Belton Topman's hand up first.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation question. Have the students been educated on this? I wasn't sure if you said that or not. Have we taken the children into the assembly room and talked to them, or assembly and talked to them about what's about to happen in the schools?
That has not been done yet, to my knowledge.
Okay, so tomorrow, before we implement this, is that something that can be done? I don't think it's fair to our students not to prep them in addition to that. The other thing I am concerned about is your setting. You said you're going to have it set for a setting F, which is a sensitive setting, which is great. But will principals have the ability to change those settings? Who determines what those settings are going to be? And how do we monitor them?
Right now, thanks for that question. It's going to be a combination of me communicating with the principal. The principal can't just on their own change the setting. It has to be determined and agreed upon by myself and the principal. And we do, this is a testing phase, this F setting. It may not necessarily remain on F the entire time, but we have to start somewhere. And if we start, my concern is if we were to start at a lower level, it may actually encourage students, if it's not alerting or they're getting through with something, not necessarily a weapon, but anything that might trigger the alert, then they just say, oh, that thing, that system doesn't work, and we may have more issues. So we're going to use it as a testing, analyze it, assess it for two weeks, and throughout, maybe even a few of the other schools, who, where we know we may have more issues, different kinds of issues. And we want to be able to address those. And then we can make adjustments and lower the setting as we need to.
So my concern is the consistency factor across the board, across the district. And if you determine a setting that all schools should be at the same setting, and I don't want, and I would appreciate some sort of a protocol being put in place if this setting needs to be changed. What I don't want is to walk into a building on the east side, and the setting is an F, and walk into another school, and the setting is an A. Okay, I want to make sure that we're consistent across the board with what we do. That's all. Thank you very much. I appreciate what you're doing. I appreciate what you're doing.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And next, I see Parents Heard, Board Member Heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Chairwoman Evans-Brown, and thank you for your presentation, Mr. Hills and Chief Lark. This initiative, you know, the board, we've been looking for different ways to secure our schools, and parents have voiced out their concerns about metal detectors and, and the community itself, you know, concerned about our children and, and the safety inside of our schools. And I believe that this measure is a great initiative moving forward to, to make children feel safe in schools, teachers feel safe in schools, and, and also create a more productive learning environment. So thank you for your work that you put into this. Now, let's have a couple of questions pertaining to it with school security. And if a weapon is detected, is there going to be some kind of plan to evacuate students in the area when you do detect a weapon? I don't know if you went over that yet, or that's going to be, you're going to go over that tomorrow? And also with false alarms, if a child feel that, you know, the detector go off on them, and, and they don't have anything on them, but they might feel a little agitatory about using it, or getting false alarms, how would we handle situations like that?
Um, the weapons, if they're detected, school security, I really don't, will, will be able to, they have protocols and procedures that, that's written up, that they'll know what to do. It, it's the same as, what would they do now if they wind a student and find a weapon? The prot, protocol is to secure the weapons, secure that individual, and have, have 911 call to address that. So that's how that's going to be handled. As far as the false alarms, there probably, there will be false alarms. Not, like I said, the alarm, the system, the scanning system will have alerts that will go off. Sometime, it doesn't necessarily mean it's a weapon. It may mean that you have something on your person, a metal object, that's going to set that alarm off. Unfortunately, that's where I think that, you know, talking to the students ahead of time will definitely help educating parents so that they can talk to their students if their students come home. And so I think everybody's going to bear some responsibility in educating the students, the schools, the parents, and, and everyone. But we are in conjunction with this training, with these trainings and the scanning devices, in the process of setting up de-escalation trainings for all of our staff, so that they can talk to kids and just kind of calm them down if they're upset. But again, having school administrators and staff there that know the students, and security officers who know these students that work there every day with them, can help calm them down, and just let them know that they're not being targeted. The system is set up. We'd rather have it do what it needs to do, the way it's designed to work than not work. So that's the way we plan to handle the false alarms.
And if I could add to that very excellent summation, Board Member Heard, the, one of the reasons this product was appealing to the review team and through the whole process was because it has the screen with the box on it that shows you exactly where the item was, so that it's, you're not doing a whole search, you're doing targeted, you either can do a whole, you know, you can do a whole one, you can also send the student back through the system to see if it cleared out. So it, it provides, even with a false alarm, i- it's a less intrusive process, more targeted, more accurate. And this is artificial intelligence. The software paired up with this is tied into national databases, so it learns as things go, go on. That's why they called it Evolve. So as it gathers from stadiums and other schools, different objects that present a different profile, it actually learns what they look like, so it can start to eliminate them. You know, there, there's a couple that they, they've talked about, an umbrella, because it's very similar design, in shape and configuration, to a pipe bomb, really sets it off. So there are some things they haven't been able to eliminate, false alarms, laptop hinges, they're still trying to figure out why laptop hinges set it off. They, there's some, you know, so there, there are false alarms, and they tend to be of a certain kind of item for a false alarm. It will be a much less intrusive process, and that's one of the reasons why this system stood out. It doesn't just ding everything. It dings, but it also gives you information.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. And my last question would be about shoes. Does, does Evolve system has the capability of detecting icons inside of a shoe?
Can I do this, Chief Lark?
Sure, go ahead.
They, they have demonstrate, they have prop guns they use when they demonstrate it. I stuffed them in my shoe and walked through multiple times, and every time I picked it up. So it, it's designed to do from the floor mat up, so, but believe me, that's the first thing I did. I, I made sure I took the props and stuck them in my shoes. It wasn't very comfortable. So Chief Lark, I, I know you probably could speak with a little more authority and expertise on that, but I had to share my story.
No, you're, sir, your personal story is always better, so you're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Terrence. Okay, Dr. Anne Rivera.
Very much. I appreciate it. So again, thank you very much for being proactive about this and working forward. And I particularly appreciate the conversation about de-escalation and about the connections and the greeting and the way in which students are still welcomed into the building. I think that's really important. You had mentioned that there were, that there would be conversations had with students, but also that you would want community members, parents, to start talking to students about how this works, why we need to do this. Are there any plans in place to support parents to be able to talk about this? And would you be interested in making some?
Yes, there are plans in place. As I said, we are going to, I'm going to be working with Dr. Reynolds to do a Facebook Live information session with Evolve and the parents. And then I just met with Dr. Williams this morning. It's going to be ongoing Zoom meetings with myself and parents to, and the community, whoever wants to join in on these Zoom meetings, to have conversations about not only the Evolve scanner, but security issues, parents' responsibilities, and, and things like that. So, yes.
Thank you. I think that's really important, as well as the, the timeline. And I just want to emphasize that timeline for de-escalation training is really important. I know that it's a part of the entire approach that needs to happen, because even beyond false alarms, just walking through scanners can be triggering to students. I know you know this, but I, I appreciate that emphasis, because I think the way in which, the way in which the connections happen, as students enter into the building, as they go through the scanners, as they're worked with, as they come out of the scanners, whether or not something is actually found, how that handoff happens is really critical. And so a lot of attention being paid to that area, I, I appreciate it, and, you know, as far as you can go with that, I, I would, I would like to see more as you continue to, to work with us.
Dr. Rivera, Board Member Rivera, the, this is a, a big selling point for Buffalo Public Schools. We have this unique innovative technology, and it stands out from maybe some of the charter alternatives or private school alternatives in providing that real clear, open technology, but also safe. So, and, and that balance is critical. And hopefully, it also, Chief Lark talked a lot about having that warm face. It would present a better profile as, as students are entering, and then also free up some time for them to sit in homeroom and talk and have. So I, I think there's many ways that it will make our students more comfortable, but we still have to be very aware. And that's what I appreciate. Chief Lark has been very ambitious about making sure she's building those connections.
I really appreciate that. I think that's the best way to go, and I think you said it really well, is that balance between openness, security, and relationship building is the most critical piece. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next, we're going to have Board Member Terry Shuda.
I was happy today. I went over to South Park High School, and I was able to see the devices unpacked, and they're ready to roll. And so I appreciate that. My question is, when you're doing the scheduling of high schools, I'm wondering if there's going to be any priority given to the, the schools that have the highest transfer rate in, instead of the schools that have a, a pretty stable cohort? And I'm wondering if we can take a look at, like, the Burgard and South Park and the places that get kids continually, that are new students, if there could be a priority that they may be able to have the training and the devices put up? Is it the beginning of the, the batch, I guess?
Ms. Shuda, we will take it into consideration.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Jen McCosky, Board Member.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Congratulations. So I am really thrown by how many of my colleagues have brought up many of the kind of things that have been going through my head, especially around the consistency, this, this, the community itself, that's, you know, there's folks up in arms around winding and, and, you know, just this whole thing altogether, but the narrative is, you know, we have safety issues, we have to deal with this, this is, this is what's happening. So I want to be able to make sure that the narrative from us to the community, from you all to the community, is very succinct and on the same page. So when you have these sessions, I'm, I'm asking that we really look into translation, we look into if it's going to be a Zoom call, that you have folks that are able to be able to, no matter who it is that's receiving this, can understand it. I'm curious as to, once you get the ball rolling, what are, based on Board Member Shuda's question, which is, which is true, you know, how often are you going to revisit these trainings? Is this like a one-and-done thing, once you get the system in? Or are you, is this something that we revisit every four months, just to make sure folks know? Those folks that you have in place that are the, you know, kind of warm and fuzzy people that are going to make sure that these students are really feeling comfortable with this? They could transition in and out of buildings too. So how often are we making sure that we're checking in with those folks? So that's, you know, just concerns that I'm saying, moving into this, I'm not saying you should have a plan for it, because it's not happening yet, but my, my other issue, not issue, was a question around this attendance piece. Some of the schools have an, an attendance piece. I know it's not priority, but I'm very curious as to, like, is that an attendance taker? Does people have to have, like, a barcode? Like, I'm, I'm not sure what that was, but I'm, I'm very curious as to what that was you were talking about.
So, Chief Lark, McKinley, Board Member McCosy, McKinley High School piloted a, a program at the beginning of last school year, where they basically, in Amazon and various vendors, purchased handheld scanners that would read the barcode off of the bus pass. And they use that as students enter the building, and many schools implemented that partially. It was really an informal strategy that schools just shared, because they liked it. I-Prep has implemented it. They not only have it at the door, they have, if, they have scanners, laptops set up, they also have a little pad where they enter in the numbers. And they also have an app on their cell phone that they, actually, if they catch a kid in the hall late for school, they can scan it, it goes right to a spreadsheet, and they can just set up detention off of it. So that, that's a system that was really set up by the schools with their own initiative, doing it a little bit of pirate access, trying to get Amazon and everything. But it, it shows the innovation and commitment of our building leadership teams. But it really, it doesn't have anything to do with this initiative or anything that was system-wide. I, I want to loop back. Board Member Shuda asked a question about how the schools were kind of set up for, for initial training and rollout. And Chief Lark had worked out from the 19th, a recommendation for schools, which we shared with Evolve, and really, the considerations that were shared by Board Member Shuda were pretty much boiled into the order from 1 to 16 of how those schools were recommended. We'll, we'll work that out with Evolve, but Chief Lark, already on the 19th, had really looked at a lot of those factors and had put them into a recommendation for numbers. Now, I have to say, I picked I-Prep. But beyond that, Chief Lark has really made sure that we address things like transient, building size, number of incidents, to, to set that schedule up.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I, I do want to add one thing. I feel like with something, this undertaking is so huge and necessary, but huge. And Dr. Williams, President Cotman, I just want to relay my concerns on the record that we do remain consistent. If a school is doing one thing and another school is doing another thing, and we have different ways of activating this, different ways of people, like, engaging, that we remain consistent. I appreciate, Mrs. Lark, your, your, the sentiment around having folks who know the students there. So that stays consistent. I understand we, we get low staff, but you always have those folks, even if it's an engineer or a cafeteria worker, or somebody who knows the students, that can be there instead of just a body, like, that should be consistent. If we do this attendance thing, and it works, and people are okay with it, that should be a best practice. Like, we have an opportunity now, take something brand new, and not have to worry about how to re-engage a process that everybody can follow, that the district can hold, you know, standard to. And like I said, however you go about trainings in the future, how often, how do you recycle things, I, all of that, I just, you know, hope and pray that we stay consistent with it. Because this is, this is good stuff, and I'm excited, but I also see the potential for, you know, some schools being an F, some schools being an A. We have to be so on point with how we put this together. So I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jen, Jennifer. I'm going to go to Board Member Cindy McAction. Do you have any questions?
Yes, just a, just a comment, just building on something that President Belton Cotman stated early on, and, you know, I think you guys did a tremendous job at just getting us to this point. I think it's literally incredible. That's, it's a heavy lift. That's a lot of stuff to manage and all of the different pieces. But one of the, the elements that I just want to lift it back up, because I think it is critically important, as we continue to, you know, work with our students and, and keep having the buy-in from our students, is making sure that we are communicating with them. And so I really do look forward to hearing what the plan will be, and I want to make sure it's lifted back up as we're having these conversations. What will be the information shared with students in advance? And to a Board Member McCosy's point, in terms of consistency, and, and Board Member Shuda, consistency moving forward, as you guys are opening this up at, you know, the various schools, what will be the method for engaging our young people to make sure that there's buy-in, understanding of what it is that we're asking in the changes?
So thank you for that. Already, in hearing President Cotman's question, our Chief of School Leadership, Darlene Jaznowski, has already informed me that at all of our schools, that prior to the implementation, that the ASLs, the Associates of School Leadership, are working with their schools to make sure that it's communicated multiple ways. So there probably will be the letter that goes home. That'll be standardized. All of the schools will receive the same letter, we'll get it translated, so that, you know, folks are able to access that letter. But we know that some of our high school students, letters don't always make it home when we put them, you know, and, and give them to them. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. So in addition to that, we'll be doing an announcement, and then there will be classroom visits, so that all of the students know specifically what they can expect, because we know that we have students with different needs, you know? And for some, for most, it, it's not a hardened process, and it won't be difficult to walk in, but for some students, you know, if they hear a beep going off, it may trigger something. And so we want them to be aware, and, you know, everything that we do, we want to do it in a way that's restorative and targeted, you know, and respectful to the students. So we will do that at every single school prior to implementation, including I-Prep, which is going to be implemented Friday, which means tomorrow, that there's some work that has to happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate kind of the further input on that. That's awesome.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Board Member Scott, I'm going to go with Board Members who have not spoken, and then I'll go back around for those who have already spoken. Board Member Larry Scott?
Thank you. Vice President Evans-Brown, I actually had my question answered by Chief Lark. I just wanted to get a sense of when these would all be installed. I actually had my question answered by Chief Lark. I just wanted to get a sense of when these would all be installed and operational. And it sounds like February, in our high schools, February and latest by March. Thank you for the presentation, and just kind of want to piggyback on President Belton Kotman and Board Member McEkin, that I too believe that we should have good, clear communication with our students so they know what to expect. And it will hopefully in, increase buy-in from them in cooperation when this, when this gets launched. So thank you again for, for the presentation. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Board Member Woods?
I joined, I joined the, I joined the presentation late, but what I'm hearing in answering to the questions that the other board members are asking. All schools being evaluated the same, getting the same punishment, that's, that's exactly a very important point. Because that's what people are looking at, the code of conduct being evenly applied. And I was listing for the priorities on the school, because I, I kind of thought you might start with like McKinley and some of the schools that have, you know, like Bennett that had a gun problem. But I think they already spoke to how they selected the schools to start with. So I think I missed that, but I was, I'm just curious as to how they selected the schools that they are putting first.
Correct that. It was not Bennett that had the gun problem. It was one of the other schools in Bennett, and that's the narrative that went out that was incorrect. So in fairness to Bennett, now that we're airing our dirty laundry in public, it was not at the Bennett, Bennett School that that incident happened. Okay, so that's, I don't want to get into where it happened, because I don't feel as relevant at this point. But it was not Bennett, and the narrative should never have gone out that it was Bennett. Thank you.
Okay, so Chief Lark or Chief Hills, you want to respond to Paulette? Board Member Paulette?
Yes, I will. Ms. Woods, I took into consideration the size of the school, the transfer students, the number of incidents maybe a particular school had. And went with that for recommendations for the installation of the remaining Evolve scanners.
Thank you. Did I answer your question, Board Member Woods? Unmute yourself.
I'm, I'm assuming that there's, they gave a, a list of the schools that you're starting with the priorities. Is that, that was already presented?
Yeah.
I don't have the list in front of me right now. We're working on that tomorrow. The only school that is scheduled at this time is iPrep. We're scheduling tomorrow based on the list that I have, but I don't have it with me right now, so.
Okay, well, I, I've just been interested in seeing the list of the schools and the order that they, that they were going to be have the equipment installed. And I heard you say to Larry Scott that the project would be complete in February, so that's, that's the information.
We hope.
For high schools, that's the goal.
Okay, high schools. Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's the goal. All right, so I believe every Board Member had at least one round of questions. Mine are this. One, with this project, do you find that you need additional staff? And then the second question would be, why did some schools agree with the second scanner and not others?
I can answer the first question, and then Mr. Hills can answer the second. Do I feel we need additional staff? Yes, we do. We will need more security officers to staff these scanning stations. Elementary schools do not currently have security officers there. The systems are going to be installed in the elementary schools as soon as we're done with the high schools, so we definitely need additional staffing. So yes, that is, that is my answer.
So what do you plan to do about it? Is there something in place? Is there a plan in place to get these staff before the scanners get there?
Yeah, I have to request additional funding for that in the budget. That, that's the only way I know how. I'm new to, to the board, but I am not new to budget, so. Yes, I have to request additional funding for staff, but it's necessary. Our goal is, the goal, when I came aboard, I was told to, that it is to, to move security into elementary schools. You know, we have parents that go into the schools that can be disruptive. At times, we've had all kinds of issues going on with parents in schools. So we want to make sure that every school building, every, all staff members, visitors, and everybody are safe. So we do definitely need security at that level as well.
Is that more than the 50 security officers that are included in the ARF ESSER budget?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to answer the question, Dr. Evans Brown, about the second scanner at a few locations, the way that that was determined was by population, number of students passing through, and also schools that used a secondary entrance. So for example, Hutch Tech has both the Chippewa entrance and the Johnson Street entrance. So two scanners were allocated there. I'm sure they would take another one if we had it. iPrep, you saw there was a cafeteria entrance and also the main entrance. Some schools use two entrances, but they don't have that large of a student population. So a school that maybe has about 300 kids, maybe has a breakfast store they use and a main door, but they, we were only able to allocate one because we only had 65 total to work with. But because we only have 59 addresses, we were able to at least get some of our larger volume high schools' double systems, which can either be paired up or can be deployed separately. So those high schools are Olmsted, Cineoners, iPrep, South Park, Hutch Tech, McKinley, and the Bennett Campus, but when there's two schools there, so they're actually going to go to using two separate entrances. And when Middle Early College leaves the Bennett Campus, they'll take their scanner with them.
Okay, thank you for that thorough explanation.
And Chairwoman, I do see that our Chief of Human Resources is on, and she would like to speak briefly to some of the work that she's been doing to help ensure that we reach our at least 100 security officers that we put into the ARF ESSER budget. I know that she's been posting and they've been interviewing and all of those things. So Chief Holly McGee, would you like to add anything?
Sure. Thank you, Superintendent Williams. Thank you, Chief Lark. So Chief Lark and I are in close communication in regards to how she wants to organize her security department. So originally, prior to Chief Lark joining us, we had a goal of around 100 security officers on our roster for our Buffalo Public Schools. And so we have had some discussions in regards to what support she believes she'll need in order to be successful with making sure our schools are safe. Right now, we're at the number of around 85. And we're revamping and reviewing whether or not she needs some more support in her leadership team to make sure that she has the appropriate, with the added number of security officers that, of course, may add with the number of leadership members that she may need to add to her team. So we're reviewing that. We're analyzing that data in order to make sure that we don't over extend ourselves in regards to the number of security guards that are on foot, feet on the ground in the schools to make sure that we also have the proper amount of individuals that are supervising the security guards that we have increased over this school year. So we're reviewing that, and we're hopeful that Jim will share with you some of the ARF ESSER funds that have quickly disintegrated over time with the use of appropriate allocation of funds going to other resources and, of course, the security resources, which is part of the Superintendent's Five by 2025. So we are, we are aligning our decision-making in regards to that, to that being one of our goals. Of course, Superintendent wants us to make sure that the schools are safe, but she also has to make sure that she has appropriate staff members in place to also supervise those individuals as well. So we're trying to make sure that before we add additional security guards, she, Chief Lark, has the proper support to make sure that the supervisors are in place that are going to be out there in the schools. So we're working on it. We're definitely working on it. Once Chief Lark does her assessment, she'll let me know if we want to add additional security guards that'll be at the door, or if she wants to add additional security guards that will be at a supervisory level.
Okay. Thank you for that. Tammy, appreciate it. So we have four other hands up, so I'm going to go by the hands I saw first, and that was Board Member Terrence Hurd.
Thank you, Chairwoman Evans Brown. Yes, my, my question was based about the, the number of officers that we have, and I was concerned about the overtime or officer calling in sick or vacations that we had covered for those. But my, my, my other concerns, like after-school programs utilizing the officers for that measure and sporting events. We'd be using the Evolve system for our sporting events. I know it'd be easier for like basketball or volleyball, which is in school, but we'd be continuing using the winding for like our football or the cross programs that's generally outside.
Chief Lark, if I could start? The Evolve systems, they can be moved, but it's a complicated process to move them. So they essentially will be at the location they're set up. When you do move them, you have to recalibrate. You have to reattach them. It's a lengthy process. So the entrances that they're set up, they'll be set up at. For some of our schools, that allows them to bring community school or sporting events through, but for other schools, they may not be able to. So Chief Lark, do you want to speak to what may be the process then for areas where we're not able to have the system take, take sporting events?
No, right now, the plan is, is to continue wand, winding those individuals. As I said, this is a new process. We can always assess situations and see, but we, we don't want to move the equipment back and forth, back and forth, and damage the equipment. That was our, you know, suggested by Evolve, that we just don't move it as often or frequently, so events, sporting events are on a weekly basis. It would require a lot of moving around. We're going to continue winding at this point.
I, I imagine you could use the same entrance, you know, for sporting events that's coming to the building. But I'm just thinking about sporting events that's outside, that we're going to continue using the winding at this time.
Yes, that is the plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Hurd. Board Member Shuda?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say sadly, our kids have been used to this process with the winding and the, you know, as they come into school. So I, I'm not really convinced that it's going to be a big selling point to get them on board. And so I'm just so excited that we're going to have something that's going to move faster. And as I've been at South Park in the morning, and I'm sure that all the other schools have seen the long process and the extra staffing you need to supervise kids as they're being wanted. So I appreciate all your efforts in, in getting this going. My question is, you said there's 85 security guards that we have now. Are, how many do we have that are, are hurt or not currently working?
Don't know if I have that right now.
Yeah, if Chief Holly was on, she would have that information. Okay, thanks. That's it.
Okay, I was just trying to get my camera on. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yes, did you hear the question from Board Member Shuda?
Board Member Shuda, can you repeat that question one more time? I'm sorry, I was trying to finagle.
Thanks so much. I'm just wondering, out of the 85 security guards, do we have all of them are working, or do we have a good portion that are out? I knew there were several that had been out. And I'm just wondering what for, what the actual number we have that are active.
Well, okay, let me just say that we have 85 on the roll. We do have quite a few number of security guards that are out on workers' cap for situations that have happened on the, in the workplace. So we have around six. I don't have the exact number. I usually get that number from the wonderful Tammy Parsons, which is Chief Lark's assistant. But I didn't grab that information for today, so I apologize.
Okay.
But I know there's around six right now that are on some type of a leave, whether it's workers' cap or an administrative leave. We do have a couple from HR that are on administrative leaves that are under investigation. And then there's a few that are on workers' cap, but I don't have that exact number. But we have quite a few individuals that are in the schools and actively working in, you know, foot, feet on the ground and in the schools.
Okay. Are you able to share that information tomorrow? Are you able to share the information with the board tomorrow?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
And we haven't stopped, and just by the way, that, Board Member Shuda, we have not stopped recruiting. So we just, as recently, right before the break, we were interviewing for security officers as well. So just because we're at the 85 number doesn't mean that we have stopped recruiting and interviewing individuals on Wednesdays to have them interviewed for potential positions in our school buildings. Again, we're very, very calculated. Just because someone may have had experience, per se, hypothetically, in corrections, doesn't mean that they're a fit for our students. So we do an extensive interview process because they are, you know, individuals that we need to know, they need to know that they need to have relationships with our students and our principals in our building, so. You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that's really critical, Tammy, just because people have had experiences in those areas, they may not necessarily fit with our children.
And we've, we've seen that. I mean, past experiences have told us that, that, you know, we want to make sure that the security guards and the folks that are, whether they're security guards or bus aides, they're individuals that want to have relationships with our students, positive relationships with our students. And we're not just taking anyone off the street. We're not.
Amen. Thank you. Board Member McCaus, McCosy, followed by Sharon and President Sharon Belton Kotman. And that's going to be the end of the questions for this session, because we're going a little over, or we want to stay within that hour. Okay. Board Member Jennifer?
You, I am based, and, and piggybacking off of what was just said, I just wanted to put out there that we can always look into, when we're looking at staff, we need to look into who we have readily available and positions where we know students are already in touch with these folks, like our parent liaisons in all these buildings. You know, our, our, again, like cafeteria workers, folks who see these students every day, who may have an extra hour or so. Instead of hiring brand-new folks, you know, let's make sure that if some folks are part-time, that we're looking into really sustaining people by having them available and, and looking into who we already have. I don't know how that works as far as like if there's unions involved or whatever in the hiring process. But at the same time, I, I feel like a parent liaison is a perfect person to maybe not be the security, but at least be at the door like, hey, because they know them, right? And it also enhances that relationship that we're hoping that they're having with these students and families as is. And then it also, that parent liaison can also address family members who may, you know, have issues with what's going on and, you know, just be able to be that backup. So I just wanted to suggest that. Me with like pie in the sky eyes here.
Thank you. We would love our parent liaisons, what Dr. Ramona Reynolds has been phenomenal with helping us do with our recruitment. She's one of our primary resources with our backpack stuffing. And our robocalls when we have events to do recruiting. Of particular different occupations in our different departments. So we really like to tap into the parents first. Unfortunately, a lot of our positions in our district are not part time. They're full time positions and parents, sometimes they want part time positions. And so with us having eleven union, well, twelve unions. You know, we don't have that opportunity to have that flexibility to offer opportunity for part time. However, we do have substitute positions like substitute teacher aide, if someone would like to be a substitute teacher aide. That's a little bit of a flexible schedule, there's flexible scheduling in substitute teaching. But all of our other positions are primarily full time. Positions that allow for self sufficiency wages and things like that, so. Individuals can go into those fields, so. You know, unfortunately, security doesn't have that flexibility for a part time or one day a week. Type of a position where parents may be available. But if they're looking for a full time job and they're a parent. And they're looking to become a security guard in our, in our schools and they have an investment in the safety of our students. And they have six months of experience or a two year degree in criminal justice or a two year degree in criminal justice. You could have six months at Rite Aid. And if you have a vested interest in the safety of our students, you will be considered for a position with Buffalo Public Schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the last question will come from our President Sharon Belton Cotman.
Thank you, this is a question that was sent to me by a parent in regards to the book bags. How are, how they're being handled? I believe you said they were going to be put on the table and then they would be searched, is that correct? Or how does that work? Because the question was, how does that save time? And that's the question that I got on my phone from a parent.
Well, we, well, we have a certain number of guards, at least two guards there. Going through the backpacks just to make sure that there are no weapons in the, in the backpacks. Because the backpack is not going through the scanner, it's going to be handed off to the site and it just has to happen. And we're hoping that the line is not backed up and bogged down, but it is a necessary process.
So the kid doesn't walk through the scanner with the backpack?
The reason why they don't is because a lot of them will have laptops and so forth in there. When I went to Niagara Falls, I viewed their system and they push them, they have a lot of children go through early in the morning at one time, almost two thousand students. And they hold their backpacks up some other kind of way. And I said, I just thought it would be more efficient to have the backpacks just put over to the side. And then just search the backpack, make sure there's no weapon anywhere, the student goes through the scanner. If the student clears the scanner, the backpack is searched, you know, then they hand the backpacks you when they go through. Either it's going to set the alarm off and they have to come back through again, or you try to eliminate that from the beginning and set it over to the side.
So are they going to be wound? Are you going to wind the backpacks? No?
No, not unless, not unless the alert goes off on the scanner. Then they go over to the secondary scanner, scanning station and they're wound at that time, other than that they're not wound.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, this should be interesting. So there's no other questions? President Sharon Cotman, did you have anything else?
Oh, thank you, I just asked for a few minutes to address the board. My intent was to reach out to most board members today, but I've been a little under the weather. And so I wanted to, I talked with Nate today in regards to. Proposing a consideration of the agenda for our future meetings. I had had some conversation with several board members about how we can be more efficient. In our meetings and one of them was to move the committee reports to later down in the agenda. And he is going to put something together for us to consider, so I want you to be aware that that's coming. And also a time limit to be placed on conversations that are being had at the table. So that in regards to committees and things like that. And these are things that at least five board members have told me that they are interested in seeing. And so whatever ideas you have, please share back with him. Additionally, I also asked Dr. Will Caressis today to reach out to the Council of Great City Schools. To see if they have, what their schedule looks like for availability for us to possibly do a retreat. In regards to highly effective boards. And Will, Dr. Caressis is going to get back to us with that. And finally, the third thing is, if at all possible, the items that you feel are your, your. Your hot button items, the items that you want to make sure are addressed by this board this year. So I would appreciate if you would send them over to Dr. Caressis as soon as possible. This will tie into us establishing committees, our subcommittees. And we want, what we want to do is we want to engage everyone to make sure that every board members, some board members you campaigned on certain issues. We want to make sure that those issues are brought to the forefront. And we want to just collectively start working on things that we can do to improve our school district. So those are the three things that I just had and I wanted to share with you. So be on alert for those things. And I will be reaching out to board members as I feel better, okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so finally, Dr. Tanya Williams, do you have any closing remarks for this session? Because we need to wrap it up and close it out.
You know, I just want to say, I think that the staff did a great job presenting. You also look for more to come, I think that the questions were very intuitive and give us some guidance on where we need to go. And I just want to say that I hope at the end of the day. What everyone heard is that, you know, there will be some standardization, we've taken a lot of care. You know, we have in a very short period of time done a lot of work to make sure that this is happening. I believe we've got the right people who are leading the effort. We've got training set up for parents, we have a plan now for our students. And I'm excited to see what Friday brings about. You know, I am just asking folks to have a little bit of patience because we want to get this right, we want to get it right. We've never done this before. And so we got to make sure, as you know, we hear Chief Lark and Chief Hills. That, you know, we're monitoring daily to see where the kinks are. If there are extended delays with children getting in, then we modify so that, you know, we don't start to have that happen at five or six schools. But we're going to try to do it as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can. So great job, team.
Thank you, yeah, great job, team. It's all about safety. So with that, this will close out the executive affairs session. And I'm going to pass the mic over to our Board Member Paulette Wood, Finance and Operations.
And welcome to the Finance and Operations Work Session. We have three items on our agenda today. Which are ARPESR update, and ARPESR community update on the progress being made with our community agencies. And then the also very important update on our twenty three, twenty four annual budget process. I think you'll find some very good information from our acting CFO. At our conference in Orlando, the National School Board Association Conference. It said every time we report the use of money to our community. We should make sure we report that it's aligned to the school board and the superintendent's goals. And how much money has been spent to implement the goals and the vision. That the school board and the superintendent has. So I think you'll be very pleased with this presentation. And I give it over to our superintendent for her remarks.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairwoman, and congratulations on being reappointed as the Chairwoman of Finance and Ops. Tonight you're going to hear from our acting Chief Financial Officer. Jim Barnes, who is doing a magnificent job. I agree with you in saying that I think our budget demonstrates our priorities, wherever we're spending our money, that says where our priorities are. And my priorities are your priorities and the priorities of our community and parents. And so you will hear tonight that we have been very intentional about how monies are being allocated and spent. And it must align to what we have within our strategic plan. So I'll turn things over to Mr. Barnes.
Thank you Superintendent, Mrs. Woods. Good evening, everybody. So I got the three issues, ARPESR update, our community organization update, there might be some semantics there, but I'll explain when I get to the slide. And a quick preview of the upcoming twenty three, twenty four budget process. These are updates and these are summary updates and previews, they will be followed in the coming week by a lot of detailed reports. Edmer, next slide, please. Thank you. The first slide, we have a revised three year ARPESR plan. Twenty one, twenty two year, those are actual and audited numbers. I reported back in October, I think, around a sixty million dollar spend in the first year. That was out of a hundred and twenty four million dollar budget. The big question at that time was what happens to those unused funds? The twenty one, twenty two actual results, they've been closed out and audited. All unspent twenty one, twenty two dollars and the encumbrances have been carried forward and repurposed into the twenty two, twenty three budget. So that's how the unspent money was used. Important to note, the twenty two, twenty three budget is still being revised. However, any additional items at this time, they have to be offset by cuts in other areas. We have to stay within the two hundred and eighty nine point six million dollar award over a three year period. One thing to note on this, you'll notice at the end of this year. The ESR two, CRSSA, I'm sorry for all the acronyms, that's how they're denoted by the state. That portion of the ARPESR grant ends. We will have to spend, we have to make sure we spend the forty nine point three million that's budgeted. That would close out that portion of the ARPESR budgets of eighty nine point two million. So there's a lot of deadlines and management associated with these ARPESR funds. And their guidelines are changing, say every six months. But we're on top of things, that's our current plan. Next slide, please, Edmer. One of the biggest concerns regarding this pot of money we receive is, are we spending it? This slide shows the twenty one, twenty two spend, that's the fifty nine point eight million. And the second, the third column is the current year twenty two, twenty three awards. We've already spent or encumbered fifty seven point two million. So we've spent or encumbered in the first six months of this year. About the equivalent of the past twelve months in the past fiscal year. So our spending and activity is picking up. In total, if you take last year and the first six months of this year. We've spent a total of a hundred and seventy, spent or encumbered, a total of a hundred and seventeen million dollars. That's roughly forty point four percent of the total award. By certain gauges and statistics that we get from New York State and the federal government, we are doing above average in that area. And again, you'll notice how fast, in six months, we've already spent what we did in twelve months last year. A quick note, this spending includes an opening encumbrances. So it's really important for the person who's pushing the project, the department that's behind the project. That they're relentlessly pursue that the work is completed, the invoices are submitted, the check is processed. I think I might be assigning a staff member within my finance departments. To help monitor and put pressure on those departments to make sure the projects are closed out. Edmer, the next slide, please. To dovetail on what the superintendent and Mrs. Woods mentioned, the ARPESR budgets, they're completely aligned to the BPS strategic plan. It's always good to revise the five strategic goals incorporated in the plan. Number one is to eliminate opportunity and achievement gaps. Access to educational excellence, accelerated learning, and enhanced operations and facilities maximization. Number three, prioritizing safety, security, and wellness. Number four, to amplify all voices and cultivate trust. Number five, activate partnerships. Our ARPESR budget in the current year incorporates and funds programming designed to achieve each of those goals. As you'll see on the next slide. Edmer, please. So let's take a bit of a deeper dive into the current year twenty two, twenty three budget. Remember there's two ARP budgets, ESR two and ESR three. The seventh column is the revised budgets, a hundred and fifty eight point four million. You see, the next column is the actual paid expenditures. Next column is the open encumbrances. So we have about a hundred and one million dollars left to either spend and encumber in the current year. But what's in those revised budget numbers? And how do they align to the strategic goals? Building improvements and plant related projects, there's seventeen point nine million dollars in the current year revised budget. That aligns with goal number two, as stated in the previous page. IT equipment, network services, there's twenty seven million dollars of that in the current year revised budget. That aligns with strategic goal number one. After school programming, eleven point seven million dollars, that aligns with goals one and two. Summer school, nine million dollars, that aligns with goal one. Security equipment and supplies, there's five point three million budgeted in the current year, that aligns with goal three. Security guards, as noted in the previous presentation, we budgeted for fifty FTEs at two point seven five million, that's goal three. And lastly, other FTEs for guidance counselors, attendance teachers, central office, there's two hundred and seventy six additional FTEs at nineteen point eight million. Those align with goals number two and three. So again, our budgets are directly aligned with the strategic plan and the goals outlined therein. Edmer, next slide, please. Okay, awesome, final comments and what's next on the ARPESR update? I always think context is important and a little history. The ARPESR budgets that I just reviewed in summary format have undergone substantial revision from the FS tens that were constructed back in July of twenty one. And that were approved by the state in February of twenty twenty two. The main focus remain on learning loss, social emotional wellness, security, and building improvements. But the mix, the different types of programming and the mix between those has changed substantially. It's always undergoing changes and the regulations and restrictions that we receive come in every three months. Currently, improvements to fields is not allowed under the, is not allowed to have ARPESR funding. So that's like a seven million dollar adjustment that we'll have to make moving funds around. I spoke with the superintendent this morning on this issue. It's something, it's a substantial change in our funding plans, but we'll figure it out. But I mention it here today for anybody who takes a special interest in field improvements. A portion of the ARPESR funds may be used to fund a BTF contract settlement, it's allowable. Further revisions for the twenty two, twenty three budget may occur. However, any additional items must be offset by cuts. The superintendent communicated that back in September and that was incorporated in my October update. We all need to keep in mind that all revisions must be submitted to the New York State Ed for approval. We know what the guidelines are, we're very discerning when we're making revisions to the budget, so we think everything's fine. But we will, we're planning on submitting these revised budgets to New York State in February of twenty twenty three. Just so you know, you know, it's never over till it's over, but we're very confident in everything we've done adheres to the guidelines. An audit of ARPESR is going to occur in the fall of twenty twenty three? An audit of our best is going to occur in the fall of 2023. Again, we feel very comfortable, we followed procurement procedures, and only allowable expenditures are in there, but that will happen. And lastly, I know what several board members have been asking, a detailed breakdown of all expenditures for all the Art Esser budgets will be provided by January 17th. So that ends the Art Esser update. Edmer, next slide. Okay, this next, second topic, what I'm calling, school-based community organizations. I'm laughing because I had a conversation with Mrs. Woods today, and she says I'm calling it the wrong term, but I think we all know what we mean. These are the engagement of community organizations in our schools to be funded through Art Esser. I'll give you a quick update. We've committed budget resources of over $1.1 billion last year and in the 2223 current year. Funding is provided by Art Esser and a small amount by CSP. And again, if you go back to the strategic goals, that's aligned with activate partnerships. You know, I didn't mention it as one of the bigger items, but it's over a million dollars we've committed. We've made approximately $215,000 in payments to date for vendors engaged in this program. We have seven contracts for services in progress or in place with these community agencies. Eight schools are currently under program and contracts, and 10 more schools are currently in the contract approval process whereby community organization programming will be provided at their schools. So after a great kickoff and then a slow start of implementing it, things are picking up soon here. And we're certainly expecting an increase in activity, contracts, and spending in the second half of the current fiscal year and next year. We can provide any detail behind that. If you make a request, I think I'll be sending something to Mrs. Woods by Monday. Edmer, last slide. Okay, my third topic, competitive timelines for the 2324 budget process. This is the busiest time of the year for the finance departments, and we're just getting started. Right now, what, just so you know, what takes all the preparation, we're doing salary projections for every employee in the district, we're reviewing charter counts and the tuitions for next year. There's a whole host of background work that needs to be done before we can launch the budget process. And our team is heavily involved in that right now. But will kickoff the 2324 budget process in late January? That's going to be after the release of the governor's budget proposal around January 18th, it usually comes out. The kickoff package is going to include the Superintendent's kickoff memo, a timeline for the school-based budgets, and the central office budget submissions, instructions from the budget department, including training schedules, a listing of department budget responsibilities by cabinet member, and along with an updated MUNIS user manual. Training's going to be really important. We're going to do that two ways, in-person group sessions and one-on-one in-person sessions. And if we got to do a virtual, we will. I think it's important this year with hosting new cabinet members, department heads, and staff. We really, the budget procedures have remained very consistent over eight years. There's more than normal retirement staff turnover, so we really got to focus on training. For the school-based budget process, the supervisor of staffing for budget, Maria Vesselino, has already communicated with the principals regarding the seat projections. Budget books will be distributed around February 4th. The school-based, the SBMTs are expected to submit the completed school-based budget books by early March. They'll have a month to do it. Then there's the school-based budget review and approval meetings. They will begin in early April 2023. This last item is in response to the Superintendent hearing the board members considering the situation regarding vacancies. A mechanism for using vacant FTE dollars is being constructed to improve equity in school allocation and spending. It's a lot harder to implement something like that than just to say it, so we're carefully considering how we do it and the timeframe for doing it. And there'll be a lot more communicated out on that during the school-based budget process. Okay, Edmer, last slide. Thank you for your patience so far. I'm ready to wrap up here. This is perhaps one of the most important slides. These are items that are going to impact the 2324 year and beyond. The foundation aid, it's expected to increase next year because it's the last year of the three-year phasing and a higher-than-historical CPI increase. However, we do next year's budgets, and we also do four-year plan updates. After next year, foundation aid is likely to stay level or start decreasing mainly due to student loss. District's BTF contract proposal, it would add approximately $54.8 million in this year if it's settled, an additional $51 million in salary and benefits next year, an additional $45 million per year in '24, '25, and another $58 million in '25, '26. So we get one-year bump in foundation aid, level off there, but we're expecting that to be offset by our contract settlements and associated benefits. We do got to keep in mind enrollment decreases. Over the last four years, our K-212 enrollments have decreased by 3,200 kids across all grade categories. And our budgeted staff has increased by approximately 333. We need to begin planning now for this structural imbalance, and a team will be created to begin addressing this in the least harmful manner. We're smart, we're resourceful people, we can figure these things out, but we need to be fully aware of the situation that we're in. Then the 2324 years, the last year of the Art Esser budgets, as we discussed earlier, we need to begin planning now for the phase-out of this funding source, including the FTEs and the programming costs that are included in it. Regarding programming costs, after-school programs, about $11 million, summer school about $9 million, that's $20 million of essential programs that are currently funded by Art Esser. They will have to move back into the general fund when Art Esser's done. The last page is just a little thank you to the board members and a welcome to the new board members. Edmer? There you go. So with that, I'm completed my presentation.
Thank you very much for a thorough update. I appreciate you pointing out that we do have some problems as far as we've got $19.8 million of a staff budgeted in the Art Esser funds. The question that I have, which is that we have vacancies, how much of that may not actually be used? And if we don't use it, it rolls into the 2324, but what happens then? I mean, how, what's, we don't want, one thing we definitely don't want is the wind-up giving back down our best or fun, so what's the plan?
Well, currently, I'm just asking you for your plan about what happens to those costs post-Art Esser. I'll give you two examples of after-school and summer school, they have to be moved back into the general fund. We got to find room for 29. The FTE counts, that's a trickier question, and that's why the Superintendent requested that I set up some type of team or committee to, one, raise the awareness that it's an issue that's coming, and think about the smartest ways to find new funding in the least harmful way. I don't have a definite answer right now. It depends upon the makeup of those FTEs as well. But we need to all be aware of the issue now and start planning. That's why I brought it up.
So that's the big thing. We've already begun forecasting. We know that Esser won't be around forever. So we have to take a look at really, you know, what we have and how we're going to still maximize services. We don't want to, you know, downplay services because we have fewer staff. The first piece is, you know, some of the staff that we put in, we've posted for positions, and for some, you know, we just haven't been able to find the staff to fill the positions. But the second piece is, if we do have staff that are working in schools that are providing services for our students, you know, we have to figure out ways. And so we're going to be working with principals so that they know right now, 18 months ahead of time, you know, how are we going to continue to maximize those services? We'll, of course, keep looking for any new grants, and I suspect that, you know, the impact of COVID will probably, there'll be new funding streams that will come out, but you know, we don't want to depend on that just in case they don't. So we'll be working together centrally and with schools, and having parents at the table too, and constantly reassessing what are the real needs. You know, the needs may look very different right now from how they looked a year ago and how they're going to look in another 18 months. So we'll be constantly reassessing that. And, you know, remember early on, I said that we will be evaluating many of our community partners that have been providing services to schools. We have a person on our team that is a research analyst that's going to be evaluating what has been the impact. If we have partners who have been in our schools for many, many years, then we should begin to see some differences, some changes, some positive impacts. If we don't, then we work with them and let them know what we need to see, because we can't keep doing things the same way, but we'll keep getting the same outcomes. So, you know, we're looking at forecasting, you know, a lot of that right now. We're not going to wait until, you know, the money is gone to start talking about it. We've begun those conversations.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. The only other question before I go, I see board members have their hands up. The other question is, annually, for new board members, there was a budget training scheduled that walked them through, this is what the budget entails, these are our basic revenue sources, the process for this school-based budget, so that they're not like, what's SBB, whatever. Luckily, we do have a principal as a new board member, so it's not all Greek to her. But will you be scheduling that annual training for the new board members and any other old board members who are interested in coming?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We'll work with the board president and get that scheduled.
Okay, thank you. That's good news. I see Terrence Hurd's hand up. Board Member Hurd?
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. I was just looking at our budget projections for next year. You said they expected to go up some as far as funding from our, for our district, but with the Esser two and Esser three of funding that we have left, you say it's $101 million point three. And I'd just like to, first of all, I should have said this last, last committee meeting, but I would like to personally thank the Superintendent herself, you know, for reaching out, you know, one of the critical issues we have with this district is security, and bringing in Chief Lark. And I would like to make sure that we use enough funding out of this budget to make sure we got the most secure buildings here in the state of New York. I know that we had trouble in some of our building different neighborhoods. We have the third poorest population in the country, and some of the things that we use in the, well, all of the monies that we use in our budget is projected upon the, our community and the position that they're in. And so with this, you know, we have high crime rate in certain areas, we have, we have children, high dropout rates in certain areas, and, but we've been improving on that, and we're still losing population within the Buffalo Public Schools. But part of that has to do with security. So I just want to make sure that we allocate monies for our security so that kids can feel safe coming to school, that our department can work closely together, and I believe with the leadership under Chief Lark, that we can tie some of the things that we've been missing here in this district. So I just want to make sure that we can, you know, use foundation aid to cover this security and also reach out for education, you know, and other elements. I don't want to go through the whole, the whole scenario of it, but, but I think that that's one of the important measures that we need to concentrate on. And, and using for education, educational purposes, and making sure that we reach out to our principals to find out that their needs and look at our statistics and see where we're at, you know, for the remainder of a piece of our budget that's left over. I don't want to add anything else to that, but I'll thank you again.
I see Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown and Board President Sharon Button-Cotman. I'm not sure which Heather handed up first.
Sharon was first.
Okay. Board President Sharon Button-Cotman?
Thank you. So want to talk a little bit about trying to work in this new budget for this year, some equity allocations. Typically, our principals are required to use the bid day number to budget from, and I don't think that's fair. I think that we should use the actual number that is in the, in the building at this point. So in other words, since certain schools have been having, having extra people added in, I don't think it's fair that you use a bid's number, and they already know, and we already know that we have more students that have been since placed in their buildings. I don't think that's fair, and I appreciate, Madam Superintendent, if you would take a look at that, because if we're serious about making sure that we provide the resources that children need, we need to have accurate accounts, and we should not have, in some cases, it's like, you know, 50 children more or in that situation. So I really would appreciate if you would do that, take a look at that. I also want to make sure that we are not budgeting year after year for certain schools that do not have the numbers, and I'll be happy to share that, but I will not do it on screen. We know that certain schools have nowhere near 800 people, but every year, they get allotments for 800 students. Okay, we need to look at that, and we need to be fair if we're doing the school-based budgeting. I want to thank you for taking into consideration the vacancies. I asked my principal today if he had reached out to his ASL to see if he could have asked the staff. He was told, get back to him, them after the holiday. He was going to move forward to ask that question. I don't think it's fair that every year, we bank on somewhere between 10 to 15 million dollars, I think higher than that in some cases, coming back from vacant positions, and the children are not getting the resources that they need. The other thing is, is that I guess what I'm looking for as a board member is a plan in place to get our students back, to increase our enrollment. And that, that has to be done immediately, and it consists of moving adults out of the buildings, finding locations for them, opening up our enrollment. We have in Bennett High School, 1,500 applicants. We only had positions for 100 last year. Okay, we're not going to stop the growth of certain schools, charter schools in particular, without making sure that we have additional seating room for our students. And that needs to be a major effort and a major plan ASAP in order for us to move forward. I feel that if we do this, we can cut some of our losses as far as our student population. So those are the things that I just wanted to bring up. Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Points well taken. You know, we've already begun some things that we're doing. You know, we've already begun some things that we're doing innovatively with the modified sports program and the Capital Project Committee that I believe several board members are a part of, talking about short term and long term and looking at where we have staff sitting in school buildings and how we can reorganize some of that. So we've already begun that piece, but the recruitment and enrollment piece of getting our kids back, I've been very public, I've been very public about saying, you know, I am aggressively and assertively wanting our Buffalo Public School students back in Buffalo Public Schools. So, you know, we're working hard to create cultures and climates and increasing that academic excellence so that, you know, we can make that happen. But I agree that a plan, a comprehensive plan, I mean, we can't, you know, of course force parents, but of course a plan for what our intentions are for getting the students back is something that I think would be very much worth us taking a look at and putting together. So we'll go up on that.
And do you also feel that in fairness to the principals, that if their staff has increased, I mean, their population has increased since BID day, that they are given at least some consideration that they have extra students and that they are preparing for next year for that? I think that's unfair.
Absolutely. I think, you know, we've done things one way for a long time and so we've gotten consistent outcomes because we've done things the same way. And so I think certainly, you know, it's time, it's a new day. We keep saying it, I mean it, it's a new day. And so we look at now, you know, if in fact our enrollment, and we know that it does go up in the spring, we incur a lot of students in the spring, and yet, you know, staffing happens for numbers that were looked at six months prior to that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, Madam Superintendent. Yes, thank you, Madam Superintendent, on that because Ms. Cotman and I do review all of the details for all the schools and we do notice significant deviations. So it would be fair to review that six-month-old assessment. So thank you for that. Okay, Dr. Kathy Evans Brown, you're next, and then I see Jim McCosey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think my question or statement is in line with what President Cotman noted. So when we talk about student enrollment that decreased by 3,200 young people over four years and staffing has increased approximately 333 folk. So looking at the trending, it seemed to me that we should look at the number of increases in enrollment because we have had increases in our enrollment. And so would those increases offset some of that 3,200 decrease, for example? I think that should be in the comprehensive plan as well. Because when James Barnes did his presentation, when we talk about decreasing in funding, that will happen. So I'm not sure where we are with our increases because I remember at one of our previous meetings, one of our sessions, I can't remember when, but it was last year, and we were only six months in, it seemed like we pulled in 600 kids, additional students. Right?
We'll take a look at that. I believe that Dr. Brown presented a couple of weeks ago, weeks are running together, but I know that we have decreased this year, at least, the number of students that we have lost. But let me take a look at that, get that information and have that sent to everyone. Specifically, I want to keep monitoring every month, how many students are we actually losing and how many students are coming into the district and where they're going when they come into the district?
Absolutely. And where are they coming from? Where they come to, right? Yeah, I think that's important because we always keep saying we're losing kids, but we are gaining a lot of kids, including our pre- K, the three-year-olds and so on. So we have to look at the positive as well and work with that. Because if we're talking about additional staffing, we're going to have the students to offset and be accountable for the additional staff as well.
I'm sorry, I do want to stress, these are net decreases in enrollments. The enrollments have dropped overall, considering what comes in and who goes out. I just want to.
Is that for as of last year or is that like as of today for this year? How many, I'd be interested to know for this year, have we lost more than we did last year at this time?
The loss, we continue to lose, but at a much slower pace.
But your presentation stated that there's a decrease of 3,200, 3,283 over four years.
Correct.
Right? Okay, so we need to have an update to find out what is going on now.
Yeah, Superintendent, I think it was a thousand student drop last year and it's 580 to 590 student dropping that cut.
Sixty-seven, isn't it?
Yeah.
Oh, change a little.
But yeah, so it's decreasing, but it's a net decrease.
Okay. Didn't you include that sheet showing the student counts in your material at the last board meeting, CFO? Mr. Barnes, I believe you, I believe.
Oh, yes, it would have been in my first quarter report, yes.
And I believe it showed that there was a significant increase in our L's, which would correlate to the reason we had to have additional staffing. So that information is very important. We need to look at the, I think it was a four-year projection you showed.
Right. And there is one area where enrollments going up is in the ELLs, yes. But that counts again, but ELLs are up.
So that's very important when we're looking at the budgeting because sometimes due to the nature of the students and special ed students needing a higher ratio of teacher and aide, we do have that separation, fewer students, but students need more intense work, resources. So that is a problem, but it's a very real problem. So let's see, we have, are you, is that the end of your questioning, Dr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, then we have Board Member McCosey. You have questions?
Thank you, Chairwoman Woods. I just want to take kind of an opportunity to address this as many times as possible publicly, but I want to bring up SBMT teams again when it comes to budgeting and how we need to look into how decisions are being made when we talk about vacancies, when we talk about how we have positions that are open that are not being filled or not being prioritized sometimes in schools. I just want to say publicly that there's a part that I really feel that we need to set when it comes to our SBMT teams and how we get money and how we look at how it's being spent across the board, not just saying like from high school to elementary school, but to have these vacancies be filled or to have priorities because that's where the bottleneck happens, is how are we prioritizing where these vacancies are and how they're being filled when decisions are being made as to how spending is being done in the schools and it's kind of single, single schools by principle, by decision. When the district is being held for the responsibility of these vacancies and the budget and the monies that goes into them, we have too many schools that don't have, you know, they won't have a science teacher almost for a year, they're in substitute land for a year, and our students aren't getting what they receive, what they need to receive, and it all boils down to the monies and what's being asked for. And the SBMT teams are also a part of that. So I'm looking for us to create a part as a district to make sure that we set the standard of what needs to be in maybe each grade level or each, you know, from high school and then in elementary school. And then the climate and the principals and all the stakeholders and the SBMT teams then decide how the rest of the money is being spent. I know this is a weird place to kind of put this conversation, but I'm going to sneak it in everywhere because it's been six-plus years now that I've realized that each school has different, everybody's needs are almost the same as far as just the physical vacancies and the physical positions, how they go about it, the students and the climate and all of that, you know, of course is affected, but we need to set this bar here so that we always have those positions at least, we know they're being filled and the money is there and the district is, we're held accountable for that. Because right now I keep seeing, well, this is what, the school wants this instead of this, and then they don't end up with science teachers. I hope I'm making myself clear. It's after five, this is what you get from me. But that's where I've been frustrated for quite a while in how we work with our SBMT teams.
Okay, I can't, my screen changed. I can't see if there's any hands up. Is there, can anyone see if there's a hand up? Okay, thank you. Board President Sharon Button-Cotman, you have a hand up?
Thank you, Chairman Woods. So I just wanted to bring to the superintendent's attention as well as Jim Barnes' attention that I was approached back in the fall by a community partner who said that there is a Native American grant, that's a federal grant that our district is eligible for. I subsequently reached out and tried to find, gave it to someone who I worked, you know, thought could move it forward and find out, and they have not gotten back to me. I've asked twice. This grant is supposed, from what I'm being told, it's a grant that we used to apply for for years, upwards of probably a million. Terry, you're familiar with it, upwards of about a million dollars. We're eligible because we sit on sovereign land and we're eligible for it. And I'm not sure where it is, but I really would appreciate if someone would take a look and see because my understanding is, is that I think the deadline is coming up. And if we're eligible for a million dollars, you know, I really would like to see if we could do that because one of the concerns I have is our Native Americans and how they feel that, you know, their programs are moving forward and here's federal money. I'm not sure if it's federal, but I think it's federal money. It's related to the fact that we are on sovereign land or something. So I appreciate if you could look into that and I'll be happy to share the employee who I asked to look into it, who was reaching out to your grant people. So I know that they've been reached out to, but nothing has ever come back. And I just thought I'd bring that up at this point. So, thank you. And the person also offered to help us with doing the grant because they have since retired from this area and they live in Western New York. And so they even put themselves out that they would even help us do the grant if we needed help to get that money. So I want to throw that out there today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up with you and I'll follow up with Acting CFO Barnes.
I believe this is something that Aunt Bella Chely, who's working on along with Jennifer McCosey and I, Title IX grants, I think that might be what you're referring to.
No, this is not Title IX money. This is money that comes directly from the federal government for anyone who's on sovereign land. And because we are on, my understanding is we're on, we sit on sovereign land, we're entitled to some additional money that we haven't been receiving. Now, the district used to get it, they said, he said, but the district stopped applying for it. And so we want to make sure anything that we can get to help our Native American population, we can get it. Terry's hand is up, Chairman Woods, I mean, Board Member Shuda's hand is up.
Oh, Board Member Shuda, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I can't see the hands. Please ask your questions. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify with Sharon that if we take a look at our program that we have for the Native Americans, programming in the last 25 years or 20, it has completely like been brought down, like it's not as widespread as it was. I remember the program at School 19 and then all of us in the schools, we had support for our students. And so I'm wondering if that was the grant we had available to us back in those days. I don't know if, Tanja, you remember?
I don't, but I'm going to research it. I'll research and find out.
Because I know that when I have been watching the board meetings and I saw people coming up and requesting and telling how the program, and I was kind of surprised because it was one of our premier programs. Thank you.
All righty. I believe at the National School Board Association Conference, it was mentioned that there were several additional federal programs that were in the works so that they're aware that we're still going to need to continue to address the impacts of COVID, learning loss. You know, the ESER money is going to run out in 23, 24, but they realize the impacts on our students are continuing, so there has to be some more federal funding directed to address COVID effects. So I'm going to be looking to see, and I'm sure Sharon, with our BIG5 and our other associations will be looking to see what other funding the federal government's going to be offering because we, you know, we don't want to have a big drop off. Madam, is there any other hands up since I can't see that screen? Well, if there's no other hands up, then I want to thank our acting CFO and his staff for all their hard work and their presentation, looking forward to the additional information on the responses to the RFPQ that the superintendent sent out. That's the piece he's been working on so that we would be able to answer to our community groups that yes, we received their request and that they are in progress and so that everyone can see what ESER projects are going on in your districts. Madam Superintendent, you get the last words.
Again, I think, you know, a very transparent, we're trying to be as transparent as we can. That's really attached to goal number four, which is cultivating trust with the community. So, you know, I think our acting CFO, Jim Barnes and his staff, they are working incredibly hard and, you know, trying to be responsive. I hope if you heard nothing else tonight, that you've heard that, you know, we're planning and forecasting and at the same time, we're being responsive to what the board would like as well as what our community is asking us for. If I can just close out by sharing that, you know, certainly, Damar Hamlin is in all of our thoughts and the Buffalo Bills have for years and years stood with the Buffalo Public Schools. You know, they come into our schools, they provide gifts for our children, they speak with our staff and our children. And I think, you know, in a small show of solidarity for us to be able to now stand with them and stand for them, we will be going red, white, and blue on this coming Friday. We're asking anyone that's associated with the school staff, alumni, just folks who care, community partners, board members, to please let us paint our schools and our district red, white, and blue as we show that we care about this young man and we care about the Buffalo Bills. We'll be wearing red, white, and blue. And we're just asking, if you don't have Bills gear, you can wear red, white, or blue. It doesn't matter. Someone texted tonight, I believe, some questions came in that Board Member McCosey asked me if schools have uniforms for Friday. Red, white, and blue is the uniform. So I've said that publicly and I will send something out to all of our principals so that they know that Friday we're asking to show support and solidarity for this young man and expedited healing for him.
Can I ask a quick question? Last night, appreciate the fact that we did a moment of time for our dearly departed young people. Are we moving forward with doing something collectively for that family? I just got that text.
Yes, so it was just today, in fact, during this board meeting, that the grandfather texted me. And so I'll be giving him a call back after the meeting to see what kinds of supports they need and how we can, you know, best support them and. And certainly if services are open, I want to share with the board members, you know, if you would like to, to be a part and support the family. So I will let the board members know how they would like for us to best support them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And this, this concludes the finance and ops work session. And I pray everyone will be safe and have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye, everyone. Good meeting. Two hours and 13 minutes.